Now I call to order, regular meeting dated Thursday, May 2nd, 2019. Remind everyone to silence all your phones and electronic devices. If you'd like to speak on one of the agenda items tonight, please fill out one of the blue slips in the back of the room and turn it in to Ms. Jessica up here in the front. We have the invocation and pledge of allegiance by myself.
Well, you're not by yourself.
Mr. Brain, go ahead and say it for me if you don't mind.
Oh, yes, sir. Father God, we just love you. We thank you for this day. We just give you all the praise and glory for who you are, Father. We just ask tonight that you watch over us and just help us make the right decisions, Father, and the decisions that please you tonight, Father. We love you, we thank you, and we give you praise and glory for who you are, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Brain. Roll call, Ms. Catherine.
Yes, sir. Mr. Abshar?
Here.
Mr. Andrew Pont?
Here.
Mr. Barris?
Here.
Mr. Brain?
Here.
Mr. Collins?
Here.
Mr. Farnum was unable to attend this evening. Mr. Gidry?
Mr. Trimmie.
Here.
Mr. Gidry?
Mr. Gillery?
I said hi to Ms. Trimmie, I apologize.
Oh, that's quite all right. Mr. Gillery?
Here.
Mr. Landry?
Here.
Mr. Latour?
Here.
Vice President Mayo?
Here.
Mr. McMillan?
Here.
Mr. Scott? Mrs. Trimmie?
Here.
And President White?
Here, thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome.
Item four, presentation of retirement certificate to Ms. Shelley Johnson, Executive Director/CEO of Southwest Louisiana Convention and Visitors Bureau for over thirty years of dedication of service. Ms. Trimmie?
Hal and I service liaisons to the Convention and Visitors Bureau. I've been serving, how many years, Shelley?
Probably as long as I can.
Twenty-eight. I've been there twenty-eight years. And I've had the honor to not only be a part of the Convention and Visitors Bureau, but to make best friends forever. We've been from Washington, DC. We twisted the arms of the senators and congressmen for Southwest Louisiana. We went to a few parties. We did go to Washington-Mardi Gras. Now, that is an amazing thing to do. And at that point, then you get to meet the senators and legislators on a down-home way, when you're dancing with them. You can get a lot more done than when you go to the office, I found that out. So, from, and Shanna, I just have to mention Shanna's name because Shanna was the one that got us where we needed to be, told me and Shelley where we needed to go and what time to be there. Yes, she's a Jessica. So, as much as, as I hate to see you retire, then I'm as much as happy for you as I can possibly be.
Thank you.
That you are. So, on behalf, and Hal, do you want to say something?
Real quickly, Shelley, you've done a wonderful job. You've assembled a great crew. That's what a good leader does, they put great people around them, and she's really guided the ship in a very positive way. Thank you for all what you do in Southwest Louisiana. Thank you very much, Shelley.
This is by the Calquashu Parish Police Jury on the second day of May, 2019. Shelley Johnson, Executive Director/CEO of the Southwest Louisiana Convention and Visitors Bureau, in recognition and appreciation of thirty years of service to the citizens of Southwest Louisiana. Congratulations, I love you.
Aw, thank you. I didn't see that. Hold on, just one minute. Well, it's been a privilege and an honor to be the Executive Director of the Southwest Louisiana Convention and Visitors Bureau for over thirty years, and it's given me quite a few opportunities and professional privileges. And we've done a lot of work with the Calquashu Parish Police Jury. I mean, I go back to the Creole Nature Trail All-American Road and working together on that, that we've worked together on Cove Lane, we've worked together most recently on Ward Three and Turfing of the Fields, and that's going to have a multimillion-dollar impact on our community. So, working with colleagues like yourselves has really been wonderful. Many of you I've known for a very long, very, very, very long time, and it's been a privilege and a pleasure. But I can't go without saying that I do have the best staff in the world, and they are a team, and they always make me look good. So, I thank you for this recognition, and I'm very proud to accept it and very humbled to accept it. Thank you so much.
We do have a few jurors that'd like to say a few words.
Hey, you want to go to the wall?
Hal?
Yeah.
We have a few jurors that'd like to say a few things. Kevin, if you have one?
If you don't mind. Shelley, you and I go way back from the hotel industry, and you made my job, a lot of times, very, very easy, for being able to book big events in the state, dealing with associations. And I'm gonna tell you, that's the one thing I'm gonna miss most about you, Shelley, is because you always made Southwest Louisiana the jewel of everybody's eye. And we're gonna hate to see you leave, Shelley, but we know there's bigger and better things that you're gonna move on to, but I guess I'll have to start working now.
Yeah, right.
This is gonna be the front page of the American press?
Of course. It'll be buried, I promise.
Thank you very much.
Move on to item five, the presentation of trophy to Mr. Kirby Portling, in recognition of his accomplishments at the U.S. Special Olympics World Games. Mr. Abshar?
Yes, sir, thank you. I'd like to invite up Kirby. Good. If anyone has been to a St. Louis football game, soccer game, or just been around the campus, you know Kirby. He is a person that lives by the values that the school teaches and always has a smile on his face in whatever he does. He is a St. Louis staple, and many graduating classes for over a decade have been lucky to get to know this young man, who always remembers them when they come back to visit. We at the jury get to see Kirby often at our meetings when the St. Louis soccer team wins state championships, which seems like every year. But today, we get to honor Kirby for an even bigger accomplishment. He worked hard to progress through local, regional, and national competitions to make it to the Special Olympics World Games. It's an enormous accomplishment and deserves an award and recognition. To give you some context, the Special Olympics World Games in Abu Dhabi this year had seven thousand athletes from more than a hundred and seventy nations participate in twenty-four Olympic-style sports. Kirby participated, and out of seven thousand athletes, a young man from Southwest Louisiana came back with some bling, by winning the silver medal in the pentathlon at these World Games. Please join me in thanking and congratulating Kirby for representing Southwest Louisiana in a truly remarkable way on the world stage.
I thought you said me. I thought Hal said me, that's why I went down there.
There you go, Hal. Get your picture.
Do you want to say something?
Do you want to say anything?
You want to say something? Come on.
I just want to say, thanks for having me in the last past ten years. Special Olympics has done a big part in my life, and I don't know where I've been the last ten years. I just, when I, I know a lot of y'all see me around because it's for soccer and all that. I just try to be a good alumni, and I wanna, when I get somewhere or something, I want to make people feel happy about theirself and not be down on ourselves. So, thanks for having me, and y'all take care.
We gotta, we gotta, we gotta, we gotta, we gotta say a few things, Kirby. Kirby, a few jurors would like to say something.
Kirby, you, you, your dad taught both of my daughters at St. Louis, so we know you and love you, but let me just say, Coach Orland, if you stop, if you stop smiling from here till next year, something's wrong with you. Buddy, let me tell you something.
When is "next year"?
See what I mean? That's what I mean, right there.
I'm making a promise.
That's what I mean, right there. Coach Orland, all I can do is shake my head, man. Unbelievable.
Thank y'all again.
Good job.
Y'all have a good day.
Item six, take appropriate action on applications for liquor and beer permits. Mr. Crane?
Mr. President, we have two applications and recommend that they be approved.
A motion by Mr. Gidry and a second by Mr. Collins. Any discussion? Any objection? Item carries. Item seven, consideration of approving payments of all current invoices. Move. Second. I have a motion by Mr. Brain and a second by Mr. Barris. Or, I'm sorry, a motion by Mr. Andrew Pont and a second by Mr. Barris. Any discussion? Any objection? Carries. Eight, consideration of approving the minutes of the regular meeting of police jury dated April 4th, 2019. I have a motion by Mr. Abshar and a second by Mr. Barris. Any discussion? Any objection? Eight carries. Nine, consideration of approving the Public Works Committee report dated April 25th, 2019. Mr. McMillan?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm gonna read through the report. Public Works Committee report dated April 25th, 2019, a recommendation approving following request. One, code of ordinances to prohibit parking, stopping, or standing at all times outside the posted school zone on School Street in Ward One. Two, approve temporary servitude right-of-way agreement for the use of LA 3092 Lake Street and Ham Reed Road project. Three, approving expropriation for a temporary servitude by agreement for Dayline Incorporated Johnny Bro Road Extension project. Item four, approving the following items related to niblets bluff, bridge replacing, and realignment project. A, active cell agreement, and B, an active cell agreement with utility and drainage servitudes and temporary construction servitudes. Item five, approving a cooperative endeavor agreement to provide in design reconstruction and widening of Burton Shipyard Road from Highway 27, no, we changed that, it's thirty-something. I'm not sure what it was.
No, that's good.
That's okay, 27 to Global Drive. Item six, approving corporate endeavor agreement with governing authority of Water Works District Number Two of Ward Four, Mossville and City Westlake for portions of the costs related to purchasing and the installation of a new water well. Item southern, authorizing the parish engineer to advertise for the following projects. A, Ham Reed Road Extension project, Phase One. B, Carlos Drive West Approach Widening Highway, there it is, 1256 project. Thank you. Item eight, authorizing Director of Public Works to advertise for the following projects, Water District Number Five, Ward Three, and Eight. A, Canal Road, Boy Village Road, waterline loop project. B, Highway 397, James Sutherfield Road, waterline loop project and replacement project. C, Mallard Junction Water Line Treatment Plan and Expansion Project. Nine, the amending the existing ordinance to regulate the speed limit on East Todd Road, cancel to twenty-five mile an hour per hour. Highway 14 South, one mile to the curve, establish a forty-five mile an hour speed limit in its entirety. And item ten, accept Joe Spears Road Bridge Replacement Project in Ward Eight as substantially complete. That's my report. Mr. President, I make a motion that we approve Public Works.
I have a motion by Mr. McMillan to receive report and a second by Ms. Trimmie. We have discussion. Mr. Landry?
Okay, 7A. I don't agree with Mr. Scott very often, because normally I think he's wrong, but last week he actually brought that up, and I have to agree with him. You know, we've been waiting forever to do this, and I know there's been a lot of work that's gone into, you know, into the deal to get it to this point, but what's another month or two? We all know that the city's gonna annex it the day you get finished with it. I mean, it's gonna happen. How many millions of dollars is this project gonna cost? Do you have any idea? Mr. Connor? I'm sorry.
Yes, sir. Mr. Landry, it's gonna be broken down into two phases, but I believe one of the estimates is somewhere around ten million dollars, so.
In Phase One. So, we're gonna spend ten million dollars that the city's gonna take. And you know, here's the thing, people don't really care who paid for the road, they just need to get from point A to point B, and all of that's great, and we need to do that. And we're gonna keep building them, and they're gonna keep annexing them. But here's the problem, and I think why we need to wait a little bit. Where are you, Mr. Crane, on the fringe area agreement that's been going on for, what, at least two, three years?
Maybe longer.
Yeah, maybe longer. I was being nice.
We are, we're at a point where we're getting ready to probably enter into a contract with a consulting firm to get us to another phase of this, of the fringe area, and that's really, that part of it is really about getting the agreements put in place. And there could be multitudes of agreements, whether it be development standards, or cost sharing, or there's a lot of different ways and directions this can go. And so, that's something that we're really gonna have to work out and negotiate once we get into that, that phase of it, so. But yeah, we're, it's, we're working.
I just don't know how we move forward on things like this when all those things have not been worked out. They continue to annex, they continue to make these pockets of these people that don't get the service. You know, we gotta come to some kind of agreement of how these folks are gonna get the service. I mean, at least that. I don't know how you, how you continue forward on that until we figure out the water issue, the sewage issue, you know? I just, I don't know. I just, I don't understand.
If I can add, what Wes is saying, Mr. Landry is correct, the bigger picture for all fringe areas. On this particular issue, though, the one you're bringing up, we do plan on having just a, an agreement dealing with that. We'll call it the Ham Reed Road Extension Area that talks about the road, the sewage, the water, anything related to that, and we're very close. And also, the pockets, or what we commonly call donut holes, and try to address all that at the same time, and we're pretty close to being able to bring the Ward Three jurors up to speed and to where that one is not gonna wait on the whole fringe area set of policies y'all may pass.
But we're, we're gonna let a project to build the road when we don't have all of that worked out. To me, you put the cart before the horse.
If y'all choose to defer, that's fine. I just wanted to fill in a few blanks. You're right, it all plays into it, it's, I'm not saying that we have an objection, I'm saying.
My opinion is, we won't build anything, we won't do anything more than what's already been done until that's worked out. Now, once that's worked out, then we need to move forward.
That's fine.
And I don't, you know, there again, I know they're gonna annex it, that's just how it goes, that happens all over the United States. I mean, that's just part of it, and you build it, it's the right thing to do for the community, and you move on, but you know, now's the time. If there's any kind of bargaining that's gonna go on whatsoever, it's not after the roads are built, at all. It's now. And look, Guy, I know, look, he's worked hard on that, he's been wanting this thing for, oh my God, you've been talking about this for five years at least, if not longer. But what's another couple of months? I hope it isn't that long. Maybe they can get it done in thirty, forty-five days.
I believe, Mr. President, it's okay. I believe, I don't want to say for sure, but I think a sixty-day period, if y'all are willing to do it, we could get a lot accomplished to where there could be some hopeful, some resolutions of the, it's several issues all related to the road and everything that goes with it in that area, which, as you pointed out, has a more or less square, unincorporated area that is almost a donut hole if something isn't done. So, a little time is.
It costs too much. They skipped over those folks because they didn't want to pay to give them the service. That's what happened.
We can, that time we would use very, be diligent about having, getting y'all pulled in and try to get to that point to where you're comfortable to give Tim the go-ahead.
Mr. Barris?
Thank you. Have they, speaking of where they are, where are they as far as their drainage development standards, like, you know, we had just, we've just revised our hours, where are they on that?
Yes, sir. We had a very productive meeting in the last few weeks. Several of us were there, from the staff, and met with Mayor, Mr. Cardo, and Mr. Huber. We are actually, I think, I have asked Alan to set a follow-up meeting, probably the week of May 6th. So, it's been very, we've been very active with them. We're not quite there, but a lot of the key things that we are hoping they would pass in ordinances, we're at that point where we're just working through how it would work in the city. It's a little different. But I feel positive about our meetings to this date, and we're working hard to bring that to fruition, because every day that goes by, we know how y'all are feeling about that, and we want to make sure they have good ordinances, but we want them to, we want to help them as much as we can. So, it's moving well, would be my answer.
My thing is, if they're not, if they're not going in that direction, we just build, we just build this extension to their standards and save about a half a million, or five hundred million, or five million dollars, or whatever it is. I mean, you know, we pay for, we pay to do it our way, and then it's not ours anymore, so. How you, Mike?
Mr. McMillan?
Yeah, I'd like to undo my motion and redo my motion. I would like to make a motion to approve all items except 7A, where we defer 7A for sixty days, give staff time to talk with the City of Lake Charles. That's my motion.
We'll have a motion by Mr. McMillan to approve all but 7A and defer 7A for sixty days. And Ms. Trimmie had a second on that. We also have discussion. Mr. Landry?
Can you live with that? I mean, you argue with that? I know you, I know you want to see this thing go, but I just think we'll be better off if we just wait a little bit longer.
What Brian's alluded to, and Tim, I know, because I know it probably, I don't know how many years ago we've been talking about Ham Reed Road Extension, if we ever build it, we gotta make sure that we have some language in there, whatever, if the city comes and annex, we can recoup something, you know? And I know Brian and the staff's been working with, about, with all the donut holes and all that. Sixty days isn't gonna kill the project, I mean, we've been waiting on it for years. I guess I'm okay. How long does it take to, when we decide to go out for bid, I mean, but how long does it normally take to get bids back?
Mr. Brain, we advertise typically for thirty days. It's a minimum of twenty-five days by law, and then once we get, receive those bids, we'll make a recommendation to the jury to award, and then there's another sixty to ninety days, which requires us to get contracts and bonds and sign and place, so it's gonna put you towards the end of the year.
Yeah, okay, I mean.
Huh? Two more motions matter, I'm just, I'm just trying to make you happy.
Yeah, I'm good with it. I mean, if y'all feel good about it, that's fine. I mean, no, sixty days ain't gonna kill it after we've been working on it for so many years. It does. Yeah.
I'll undo my second to Hal's motion, so he can, so Hal can do a different motion.
Absolutely.
And I'll second that.
All right, so do we have any further discussion?
I'd just like to make a comment, too. I'm in one of those donut holes that I'd love to see closed.
Holding on.
Fixed. So, anyway, I think everybody's aware of that. All right, thank you, Mr. President. Are you back?
Do we have any objection to the motion? Here none. But item carries. Item ten, consideration of approving the Agenda Committee report dated. Don't move. Today, April 25th, 2019. I have a motion by Mr. Barris and a second by Mr. Gillery. Any discussion? Any objection? Item carries. Item eleven, consideration of adopting a resolution approving the Louisiana Compliance Questionnaire required in connection with the police jury's 2018 audit. Move. Second. I have a motion by Mr. Andrew Pont and a second by Mr. Abshar. Any discussion? Any objection? Carries. Twelve, consideration of adopting an ordinance authorizing the purchase of property located at 4412 Tamarack Street, Lake Charles, through funding received from the FEMA Flood Mitigation Assistant Program. I have a motion by Mr. Landry and a second by Mr. Latour. Any discussion? Any objection? Item carries. Thirteen, consideration of adopting an ordinance allowing the disposition of the police jury's interest in the donation to the City of Lake Charles for adjudicated property located at 500 Block, Shasta Street. Move on thirteen. I have a motion by Mr. Andrew Pont and a second by Mr. Latour. Any discussion? Any objection? Item carries. Item fourteen, consideration of authorizing the Director of Divisioning, Planning, and Development to notify the following property owners to show cause at a public hearing on June 20th, 2019. As to why the structures on the said properties, as stipulated, should not be condemned. A, 2333 Dupla Shan Lane Moss Bluff area. B, 2211 Man Hyde Road, LeBlue Settlement area. C, 1785 PL Miller Road and 6797 Highway 3059, LeBlue Settlement. D, 4127 Judy Drive Carlos area. E, 980 Coontz Road, North Sulphur area. F, 3087 Highway 3059, northeast Lake Charles area. G, 193 Goodman Road, East Lake Charles area. And H, 3820 Opelousas Street, East Lake Charles area. I have a motion by Mr. Latour and a second by Mr. McMillan on all bullets. Any discussion? Any objection? Fourteen carries. Fifteen, consideration of authorizing a parishing purchase agent to advertise for request for proposal for the community partners at part of Human Resource Department of Community Action Plan. I have a motion by Mr. Gillery and a second by Ms. Mayo. Any discussion? Any objection? Fifteen carries. Sixteen, take appropriate action on the following bids/proposals received by the parishing purchasing agent. A, Central and Sulphur Library Roof Replacement and Improvement Project. Staff recommends that the low responsible, or responsible and responsive bid in the amount of $1,940,000 of Shannon Smith Construction LLC be accepted. B, Israel LaFleur Upgrades and Improvement Project. Staff recommends that the low responsible and responsive bid in the amount of $1,269,000 of Kealan Construction LLC be accepted. I have a motion by Mr. Brain and a second by Mr. McMillan on both items. Any discussion? Mr. McMillan?
Yeah, I'd like to call Dean up to the microphone, so we could talk about, and Guy, you may want to lead this conversation, but I'll yield to you, but what's gonna...
That's good, I was gonna call him up.
I'm excited about this project, and I think this is something that guys worked hard on, and it's gonna be really good for the parish. Could you give us an overview on what the Israel LaFleur project's gonna be?
Yes, sir. Dean Kelly, Director of Facility Management. For many years, Israel LaFleur Park has had erosion issues, and with this project, we will encapsulate the southern portion of the peninsula. We will come underneath the bridge to the boat launch with sheet pile, vinyl sheet pile. You can see a picture they've put up for us now. Also, on the south side, you can see a little wharf coming out to the south. One of the issues here, and what causes that erosion, is with the old river channels that comes through, it creates a bit of an eddy, and that water action pulls the sand off of that peninsula, and it actually deposits it to the east on our neighbor's property, and it creates problems with their boat slips and whatnot. So, to disrupt that water action and to disrupt that erosion, we've created a fishing wharf there that will help to alleviate that problem, mitigate against additional erosion in the future. We are also capping the vinyl sheet pile wall with a Trex deck, so the entire area there becomes very fishing-friendly. This is one of the areas that a lot of people like to fish, and they like to bank fish there. It's really gonna turn it into a destination that's much more enjoyable to the folks in Calquashu.
That's truly what I'm excited about. A lot of people in Southwest Louisiana don't have boats, and they want a place they could bank fish. Of course, Calquashu Point is one of those places, and this under the 210 Bridge is gonna be very comfortable now for... be very comfortable now for folks to have another access spot to fish. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Dean.
Thank you, Dean.
Thank you, Hal.
Do we have any further discussion? Any objection? Mr. Bears?
I'm glad to see another fishing project, another something on the east bank, because that's, that's a few. You got the new boat launch, we got this. Calquash U. Point, man, there gonna be nobody fishing on the west side, so I like it.
Are you saying you're feeling a little left out or something?
Oh, man, I'm just saying, everybody's gonna be over here.
We do have intercoastal canal. And it's wells.
For crabbing.
Visions are there for whoever wants to go fishing or crabbing.
Crabbing.
We all know you don't fish anyway.
But that's okay.
All right, moving on.
Traffic withstanding.
We have no objection, correct? Item carries. 17, consideration of adopting a resolution accepting the following projects as substantially complete.
Move on 17, both bullets. Second.
A, Intercoastal Park Improvement Projects, and B, Rehabilitation Reconstruction of the Dwelling Located at 52, 526 Helen Street. I have a motion by Mr. Abshire and a second by Mr. Andrew Pont. Do we have any discussion? Any objection? 17 carries. 18, take appropriate action on the terms of the following members of various boards/districts. A, Creole Nature Trails Scenic Byway District.
Move on 18. Second.
To appoint Sam Wilkinson?
I have a motion by Ms. Trimmie to appoint Sam Wilkinson and a second by Mr. McMillan. Do we have any discussion? Any objection? Point Sam Wilkinson. B, Calquash U. Parish Ward Seven Fire Protection District Number One Civil Service Board. No action necessary. The Calquash U. Parish Ward Seven Fire Protection District Number One Civil Service Board is inactive effective April 29th, 2019. C, Recreation District Number One of Ward Eight.
Like to reappoint Mr. Charles Burgess. Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Latour to reappoint Mr. Charles Burgess and a second by Mr. Cardo. That's bourgeois, right?
That could be why I've been saying this. It's bourgeois for three years.
Very much.
I always got that crazy.
Do we have any discussion? Any objection?
We got a real Frenchman over there.
He is reappointed. Item 19 is an advised item, and we have a point of personal privilege by Mr. McMillan?
Yep.
And Mr. Gilery.
I wanna just make sure to invite all our jurors. I'd spoken to Jim Rock this morning. Low-Tech Chemical's gonna be having their ribbon cutting. It's a big event. There's gonna be some ambassadors there from Korea, as well as a whole lot of visitors to southwest Louisiana. He would like to see all of us RSVP and try to be there for that event. It's Thursday, May 9th, at 10 o'clock, and it should be a big crowd, and I hope y'all can all make it. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. McMillan. Mr. Gilery?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanna say how great our employees are. NACO have called me and asked for Mr. Tarek Poli to lead us in conference call next Wednesday, and I just wanna thank him and say we have some great employee for people out of Washington, DC calling and recognizing them. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Poli. Look at him back there, shining star.
He always has been. He just tries to stay below the radar.
Move to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
I have a motion, a second to adjourn. We are adjourned.